Ready, Sec? If you could, please rise for a moment of silence. Thank you. If you could turn and face the flag for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Clerk, would you call the roll of councilpersons, please?
Lehman?
Here.
Podak? Cassidy?
Here.
Baker?
Here.
Mendoza?
Here.
Lake?
Here. Make motion to excuse Podak second.
We have a motion by Lake, a second by Cassidy, to excuse Councilperson Podak. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lehman?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
And just, that does carry, just a word on that. Councilperson Podak did, I think, talk to most of us. He is down in Columbus today. He is speaking on behalf, I think it's House Bill 247, and it's about restructuring the Solid Waste District to let Seneca County have full control over the Solid Waste District that resides with Sunny Farms. So that's what he is doing today. Moving into the minutes of the previous meeting. Yes, sir.
Correction, it's a Senate bill.
Senate bill, sorry.
And, and I don't think it's 247.
All right. Well, he's in Columbus, testifying on behalf. All the other details are apparently incorrect. I couldn't find it in my email to write down the some letters and numbers. There we go. If we could have a motion to approve the previous meeting minutes, please. We have a second. All right. We have a motion by Mendoza, a second by Lehman. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Mendoza? Lake?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Everybody? I think so. That carries. Communications.
Um, other than the applicants, I have nothing.
Okay. We do have several applicants this evening for open council seats, so I wanted to welcome all of you here. It should be a pretty interesting and busy meeting. We get to see democracy in action with filling an open vacancy. The following people are slated to speak later. We'll do this during the miscellaneous portion of the, the meeting, which we will move ahead of any executive session, so we'll do our old business, new business, so all the candidates can see how the council meeting basically runs in a, in a normal day. We'll go to miscellaneous. We'll have each person speak. I'll talk about what the procedures are, so you don't have to remember it all now. But we have Alexander Grine. Are you here this evening? Awesome. Thank you. Damian Slay. Cool. Deborah Tyson. Elliot Schaefer. Awesome. Ryan Smith. Cool. Susan Macias. And Michael Spencer. And we'll see if he's here by the time we get to miscellaneous business. So with that, that'll be the end of communications. We'll move into reports of committees. Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. No new updates. I would like to let everyone here this evening know that we have brought the Q and A on water and sewer rates. If you haven't had an opportunity to look at that, and you have questions about how those are calculated, that might be of interest to you, and we encourage you to take one. The next meeting of the Finance Committee will be on Tuesday, April 15th, at 5:30 PM in council chambers.
Great. Thank you very much. Public Affairs Committee.
The Fostoria Easter egg scramble will be held next Saturday, April 12th, from 10:00 AM to noon at Fostoria Elementary School for kids ages three to 10. There will be prizes, crafts, cookies, and a photo opportunity with the Easter buddy. This is a free event, open to the public, and the Public Affairs Committee will meet again on Tuesday, April 15th, at 5:00 PM here in council chambers.
Thank you very much. Law and Ordnance Committee.
The Law and Ordnance Committee will meet on Tuesday, April 15th, at 5:15 PM here in council chambers.
Thank you. Moving into Officers Reports. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I sent you all a copy of our notice to food vendors because there has been a lot of noise in the social media about food trucks, and I want you to know the facts. As you can see, we have worked with several other communities on fire inspections, such that if a food truck has their health inspection and the fire inspection complete, all they have to do is pay their permit fee, and they will be licensed in the cities listed at the bottom of the first page. All of these cities have cooperated and recognized each other's fire inspection with reciprocity. We think Tiffin will sign soon, and Finley may not be far behind, but our department led a lot of this effort. Also, I wanted to let you know that Eric Kekler is back to work part-time as of yesterday. Thank you.
Thank you. Acting Director of Public Service and Safety.
Nothing new to report at this time.
All right. Thank you. Director of Finance.
Just a couple of items. I don't know if we can suspend three reading rule today or not? Based on two absences?
I don't think we can this evening.
Just the legislation regarding permanent appropriations. We're looking to move $15,000 from the general fund into the Rail Park Fund. We're going to install electricity out there for RVs that may want to stay at the park. $10,000 of that $15,000 has been donated. $5,000 of it anonymously, and Mayor, the other $5,000, the Rail Parks Historical Society, or?
The Rail Preservation. Rail Preservation.
Rail Preservation, okay. The other item on there, the $2,000 item, just appropriating it from in the Police Donation Fund, in doing some catch-up on reconciliments, back in 2022, there was a misposting. This is correcting that. But for us to move it out of the donation fund, we actually have to appropriate the dollars. So those dollars are gonna need to be appropriated, then we will be able to move those into the correct fund. So it's just a correction from a couple of years ago. And the last item, the $30,000, if you remember at our last meeting, I think we passed on the third reading, the use of opioid funds. $30,000 of the opioid funds, though, is not going to be through contractual services. It's actually going into the DARE program. For us to make the move into the DARE fund, we have to actually appropriate it in a different line item in the opioid fund. So that's what that's doing. It's just moving it from other contractual services down to a line item that we can use to get it into the DARE fund. So those are the items on that. The only other item I have is just a reminder that on April 8th, is Tuesday, a week from today, at 10 o'clock, the Financial Recovery Commission does meet. And we'll be meeting more than likely in the, somewhere in the Mayor's office, since we'll have auditors in-house and we have court here, so we'll have to find a place for it, but it'll be probably in the Mayor's office.
Thank you very much. We will now move into the public portion. There's
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Question on quorum?
Sure. I was gonna Google that while we were speaking, but I think we might be okay.
We might be okay, because if we only have six councilpeople, we have five here, we have enough.
Yeah, that, that's what, gonna look up when the people were speaking was
Thank you.
But, but we're on the same page, because I was thinking about the, we only have six councilpeople, so we have to do quorum based on six, not on seven. So, because that seat is empty, so. So we may be okay, and I'll let you know after the public portion. So if you see me up here doing other stuff, I'm multitasking. I'm not trying to actively ignore you. I'm just trying to get an answer, so we can move on. So we are in the public portion. We have two people that asked to speak that are in the agenda. This evening is Deb Tyson and Renee Vogel-Song. We'll go in that order. Those people have 10 minutes. And just, Deb, since you're a candidate as well, just make sure you're not speaking about being a candidate while you're using your 10 minutes.
Deb Tyson, 800 Woodward Avenue, Lot 9. I just wanted to commend everyone for the progress I have seen this year, but I also wanted to note that you guys seem to do your research before answering. That's why we have a lot of third readings on the agenda right now. And the other thing is, I do have a lot of information about the solar things, and it's come to light that not everything's been disclosed. And so I hope everybody's done their research, because there's, and I didn't even try to dig. That's the sad part of it. So the other thing is, I have seen, you know, it's the springtime of year where we can clean house. Well, let's keep moving forward with our good pace. And that's all for me.
Thank you, Deb. Renee Vogel-Song.
Renee Vogel-Song, 702 East High. Well, maybe I shouldn't say it's Renee Vogel-Song. Maybe I should say I'm somebody that's emotional and written. I think the Mayor knows what we're talking about. Instead of calling us names because we're concerned about things, putting it in the paper, it'd be better off to call the citizens of Fostoria concerned and protective citizens. But instead, you wanted to call us names, put in the motion. Come on, it's not right. That really hurt a lot of citizens. Whether you know it or not, it did. Maybe a, an apology to the public would be nice. Other thing is, excuse me, my throat here, but talk about the leachate. And we're gonna throw something else in it that a lot of people isn't thinking about. I didn't think about it till this week. Well, I was listening to my station in Florida on podcasts I listen to. They started talking about batteries, lithium batteries going into the dumps down there. They're not the batteries out of these carts that they ride around on their bikes and all that. They're out of the e-cigarettes and vapes, disposables. There, my numbers is a little bit off, because I'm going off the top of my head with them. But what I read was, last year, there was 22.4 million vapes sold every four weeks across the United States. You break that down by the states, and then you break it down just with Ohio. It ain't gonna be actual numbers, but it's gonna be something. Break it down, that's over 5,000 vapes every four weeks. The majority of them's going out to the dump. Now, when these batteries leak out, they got some bad stuff that you ain't gonna clear out with chemicals. They're having trouble with them down there in Florida and other states right now, that they're exploding under the ground when they're leaking out. They're catching on fire, exploding. So how many of them is already out here and into all this that we pulled over here? That, yeah, went into Portage River, far from us, but it's going to somebody else. It's going into Lake Erie. We're letting contaminants go that shouldn't be gone. Somebody needs to do some serious, serious looking into that. That's something I never thought about. You see vapes all the time. You know, they ain't just throwing them in their drawers at home. They're throwing them in trashcans. So they're going right out there. The other thing is the solar panels. Hopefully, you guys, since the last meeting, when I watched on YouTube, have really looked into it and seen what it takes for hail to bust them open. Especially after they get five or 10 years old, they're fragile. It don't take much. You got it on top of the water, that has some never-ending chemicals. That's gonna be harmful. Now, that gets into that reservoir. It's going to all reservoirs. It's just like ticks and fleas in a backyard. Three, four blocks away from you. Gets into your backyard. How? Birds. Birds is a culprit. Birds go down to the water, they grab the fish, they grab whatever. Off they go with it. It goes into the other reservoirs. It's something to look at. It's something to really think about. It's just serious stuff. You guys ain't thinking about all of it. You ain't putting all of it together. And why are we gonna wanna put lease out to have solar panels put out there? When Fostoria ain't gonna get much of it. It's going right out to wind waste. What percentage? Somebody tell? I mean, if you don't wanna answer now, but at least put it in something, so the public knows. What percentage of the solar panel power is going to wind waste in that, that recoup thing for energy? I bet you it's gonna be up there in the high part of 80%. Check into it. That's not cool. Why shouldn't we be getting that? And if they wanna buy some, let them put some panels up there on that mountain that's capped off. Why can't they put their own panels out there? Why do they have to have it on city-owned property, even though it's in another county? It's not in the city district, city-owned property. But that should be something for the people to vote on. Not for it to be pushed from administration to council to say, here, you decide for the people. That's not for you guys to decide for the people, because you guys ain't gonna care whether 60% or 70% of us out here are saying, no, don't do it. You're gonna vote, yes, let's do it. You know that's happening. I mean, you can sit there and think any way you want to, but it's gonna happen that way. Let, let the people vote. Same with Splash Pad. Splash Pad goes in. How many times has it been told to the people what it's gonna cost the people to go in there? I've had a number of them ask me, when's that gonna be done, so we can go out there to it? It's gonna be cool that the city has a place that we can go into and enjoy for nothing. Are you really gonna have people going out there for nothing? Is there gonna be an administration fee? Is there gonna be entrance fee for it? Is there gonna be security? Who's gonna go out there and damage it when it's closed? Who's gonna be watching it? Who's gonna be watching the cameras? I know the cameras are watched out to the recycles, but they're watched when something's noted. Then they go back and look at them. There's no way to watch them all the time. And it's gonna be the same way out there. There's not gonna be no way to watch it all the time. So when it gets damaged, but three years down the road, you got the little kids going out there, you're gonna have the parents saying, wait, these teenagers is out here now. They're running it over. We can't take our little kids out there no more. So that's something to think about. Is that a waste of money? It's nice to have something for the kids to do, but let's have something practical, that it ain't gonna cost the citizens a lot of money. You can say it ain't costing the people money? I don't know. I think our tax dollars is our money. And if you guys are gonna use that to help out with this, it's costing the citizens. That's, so that's another thing. Why isn't that ever voted on? Why's this stuff all gotta go through council and can't be on a ballot? So I don't know. Think about this stuff, especially the solar panels, before you untable that and vote on it. Think about what's gonna happen with that, when they bust open, and when they gotta be removed. 10 to 12 years, they've lost a lot of, lot of usage. Usually about 10 years to 12 years, they're, they're replacing them because of the fragileness. They'll last 20. They ain't much good, so. Think about it all. That's what I needed to come back into town to say. So have a good day.
Thank you, Renee. All right. We'll move into the public portion of the meeting. That is for people that did not sign up on the agenda prior to the meeting. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes or less, and that we also ask that you state your name for the record, and at least write your address down on the piece of paper, so it can be recorded for the, for our records. Come on up.
Hi, all. Marie Corbin, and you're about to figure out real quick where I live. Address's on the paper. So I live in the only house on Reservoir 5's side on 217. My family has farmed this land for four generations, and it holds a great personal significance to us. I support renewable energy, but I believe there may be a more logical location for this solar project, such as the deserted reservoir, perhaps. Living next to it, I see people walking, fishing, enjoying this area every single day. The impact on this quiet community, the local wildlife, and the peaceful nature of this land could be significant, which I'm sure everyone has already told you. I also have a pond on my property, which attracts geese. My concern here is if that water is covered, what is affecting my pond, and who's paying for the damage that is being incurred there? As a fourth-generation resident, I, I do urge the council to carefully consider these concerns, and, you know, I love renewable energy. I'm a conservationist at heart, but let's think about things before we do them.
Thank you.
Hello. Excuse me, Joy Walters. I will put my address on the paper for you. I'm gonna change things up just a little bit, and I didn't anticipate doing this until I got a visit from the Water Department yesterday with their pretty little yellow tag. I have been in communications between the Safety Service Director, the Mayor, the Law Director. I've been trying to obtain a contract regarding the City of Fostoria with a service agreement from the utility company pertaining to the water meters. I understand batteries go dead. I understand batteries need replaced. My concern lies with the fact that these are smart meters, and they're being placed inside the home. You might ask why all the fuss, and why am I so concerned about a little water meter? Well, little water meters do emit radio frequency radiation. Why am I concerned about that? I have, outside my back window, which faces north, Fostoria, clears a bell, is that really tall, shiny, red-blinking 5G cell tower. So, very concerning to me. These have been proven to cause health issues in the way of dizziness, sleep disturbances, headaches, vertigo, nausea, you name it. This is new. It's viewed to be not a big deal, because we don't see the radiation. We don't see the effects of the radiation until you experience the effects of the radiation. I personally have been experiencing some effects, and I believe it is from the cell tower that just became a 5G cell tower not that long ago. That's right out my back window at my home. So I have been diligently trying to get this information regarding a service contract between the city and the utility company since December of '23 is when I received my first letter from the Water Department, saying they wanted to change out my meter. Having done some research and homework on EMF radiation and radio, radio frequency radiation, I discovered that this is a thing. So if we're purchasing equipment to be installed in people's homes, there should be a contract for these purchases. There should be an agreement with the utility company, the, or the, the service company for these meters. And it should specifically tell me where my data is going that's being collected on meters, the smart meters, after the 90-day period that the Water Department's no longer able to access the data. So just some real quick smart, some facts about smart meters, that they do emit radio frequency radiation. It is a concern, because radio frequency is a biologically active electromagnetic exposure that's absorbed into our bodies. They do generate radio frequency to wirelessly communicate with other smart meters and to the utility provider, and each wireless communication network increases overall density of man-made pulsed radio frequency radiation outdoors and indoors throughout a neighborhood. When these are put inside a home, to me, that says that there should be informed consent. This isn't any different than any other product that, that want, that utility companies and whatnot wanna install inside people's homes. So I feel it's a citizen's right to be provided with this, with this information regarding the contract. So, given the fact that I've discussed and requested over numerous dates, between December 2023 and March 2025 was my last visit from the Water Department, I've got one week to respond before they're gonna put the meter in my house or shut my water off. So what do I do? I would appreciate a response from somebody.
First of all, there is no service agreement, and we've told you that numerous times.
One time. I heard it from Stephanie Kaiser, the, the Law Director. She said she didn't believe there was one. And I have been told numerous times that I would get a response back from the Safety Service Director. I talked to you one time. You told me to go to the Safety Service Director. I did, numerous times. He's either out of his office, or he's unavailable. So I went to Stephanie, and she was able to contact the Safety Service Director, and he said he would have to get back to her because he was out of town. This is the little go-around I've been experiencing since 2023, and that's why I'm here.
Well, there is no service agreement.
Well, I have umpteen pamphlets of information on the actual meter itself, so I understand the meter. Where's the data going? After the 90 days, where does the data go? That's personal information. That's personal data. Then if you understand smart meters, there's more connection to it than just the meters.
Conversation up after the meeting, please.
So thank you. I appreciate the time.
Rochelle Harmon, and I live at 304 East Brown Road in Arcadia, and I spoke to you all last time you were here about the solar. And again, I come tonight, and I just wanna ask you, have you heard anything or studied anything about the fires that occur with these solar projects? Because is your local fire department prepared to fight one of these fires? Because these companies, they don't want your local people fighting these fires. They want you to let it burn and destroy your community until their people get there to take care of the fires. And then my other question is, is a person who's going to be determining the highest bid qualified in solar? Do they know? Do they have a background in solar to make that determination? Or are you just gonna let your council or somebody, whoever you decide, pick who's gonna make the highest, who's gonna have the highest bid? I mean, you've gotta have some background and some logic into it. You can't just say, oh, they have the highest bid, we'll go with them. You have to study this a little bit more. And then decommissioning? Who are we responsible for the decommissioning in the 30-some years when this is done? I don't know how many of you sitting up here are gonna be around that many years on council to determine about the decommissioning then. You need to have a plan now. Has their pillar given you a plan on decommissioning? Because currently, there really isn't much planning in decommissioning. The projects in Washington Township, they went and got approved by the Power Siding Board. They still don't have a decommissioning plan. Who determines that there is no longer a public need for this reservoir? Because as Marie stated, there's definitely a public need for this reservoir. What about all the children in the wintertime that wanna go and sled there? Yeah, they may go to the one right off of 12, but they also go to this one, because I've been there before. There are just still too many unknowns for one person to push this project without a three-reading rule and declare an emergency? Why is there a need to declare the emergency part? That tells me, and that should tell all of you, that there is something not being said, something we still don't know. CAS Project, that's the one in the township next to us. They have had three different solar companies, and the project isn't even constructed, and one of the companies was Tyre, and they were foreign-linked to Egypt or somewhere over that way, and they own Aquafina, and they have ties to Under Armour. Do I purchase either of those products anymore? Absolutely not, because I don't want that in my house, because I don't support that kind of projects on farmland. And I don't support this project on our drinking water. Yes, it's all of you that get a vote on this project. You're not just affecting the city and the residents of Fostoria. Think about it. Arcadia and the Red Hawk Community Development out there. This project is bad news to the future of Fostoria and all the communities who get their water from you. So I urge you, don't listen and just say, oh, we don't need a three-reading rule. Let's just vote on it and get it out of here. No. Do your homework. Think. This isn't something you just say, oh, we know all of our facts. Have you researched it? Really research this. This is a 30-some-year project. It's not just a one-dime whim. Say it's, oh, yep, we'll do it. It's gonna affect a lot of lives and future generations. Thank you.
Hello, Rebecca Kimball. Address on the paper. Really, I wanna bring up a little bit about Res 5, and my granddaughter had just recently said to me, you know, she's 17. And she said, I asked her, what's something you would like to do after you graduate, you know, me and you, whatever? And she said, I'd really like to go fishing, because I never have. I grew up going to all the reses here. Four is already gone, which I had said I caught my last fish when I was pregnant with my daughter at that one. There's nothing for teenagers. There's, you know, gonna be the Splash Pad. There's, you know, going to be the splash pad for the little kids. I'm great with that. But we need something for the teens, too. And if you take away that res, and, you know, it already started with four. What's next? You know, are they all going to disappear? And I've watched the Catholic Church disappear. I've watched restaurants disappear. I mean, I've watched half of my memories, if they weren't here, disappear. Don't take Res 5. Don't do it, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm kind of, my name's Anne Borsh. I'm from Fostoria. I'm kind of new to this. I've only been to two meetings, so you have to forgive me if I don't know very much. Can you hear me?
You gotta go to your room.
Oh, go to me, okay. I'd just like to make some comments. Who profits, do we profit, the town, the city, the county, by putting in those panels? Do we get money for that? Does it come back to Fostoria, to the, okay? Well, we have those reservoirs already in place. We might need that water someday for something. And we already have a water problem in this town. It seems like, I don't know how that would affect this, but I, and I've mentioned this the last time I came, I would like to be able to drink the water out of my faucet. I mean, I can't for the life of me understand. This has been going on and on and on, and it never gets resolved. I'd like to know what the problem is about that. And then I would like to say to Ms. Vogel song, that I appreciate what she's had to say here. We can't be short-sighted in our plans and how it might affect other generations. I think the worst thing in the world that ever happened to us was when that dump went in out there, and now we're reaping the benefits of that. And one other comment. If I were the lady whose family had owned that land for four generations of people, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to give up any of my land for that. I don't know how beneficial, how beneficial in the long run, solar panels are. I don't know anything about electricity. I don't know, I don't know where we get our electricity. I don't know why it's not adequate for what we're doing. I'm not fond of these whirly gigs that are producing electricity. Once they fall apart, then what are you going to do with them? They don't have, they don't have any, any solution for it. What are we going to do with those parts? I don't know. I just think that, you know, we need to maybe think about things a little bit, and I would hate to see something pushed through for a quick solution for an urgent need for money. I would like to see things resolved in a way that I know everybody can't be pleased all the time. But I wouldn't want to lose my land either, honey. I'd want to hang on to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? Seeing none, we'll move into old business. The first piece of legislation, I believe, will remain tabled. Is that correct?
Yeah.
So, it'll be the authorizing, empowering director, yeah?
Yeah. A resolution authorizing, empowering, and directing the Director of Public Service and Safety acting as agent of the City of Fostoria to execute and deliver to the Seneca County Land Reutilization Corporation all necessary instruments to effect a good and sufficient conveyance of parcel of land from the City of Fostoria to the Seneca County Land Reutilization Corporation in the vicinity of 537 South Poplar Street.
Move to adopt. Second. We have a motion by Lake, a second by Baker to adopt this resolution. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Layman?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
That does carry. It becomes Resolution Number 2025-24.
A resolution authorizing, empowering, and directing the Director of Public Service and Safety acting as agent of the City of Fostoria to execute and deliver to the Seneca County Land Reutilization Corporation all necessary instruments to effect a good and sufficient conveyance of parcel of land from the City of Fostoria to the Seneca County Land Reutilization Corporation in the vicinity of 402 Ohio Avenue.
Move to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion by Cassidy, a second by Layman. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Layman?
Yes.
That does carry. It's Resolution Number 2025-25.
An ordinance amending Section 1355.02 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Fostoria, Ohio entitled additions, insertions, and changes relating to fees and permissible grass height.
Move to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion by Mendoza, a second by Cassidy. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Baker?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Layman?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
That carries. It becomes ordinance number 2025-26.
An ordinance amending Section 917.02 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Fostoria, Ohio entitled tree lawn maintenance relating to permissible grass height.
Move to adopt.
Second. We have a motion by Layman, a second by Baker. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Layman?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
That carries. It's ordinance number 2025-27.
An ordinance amending Section 1307.02 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Fostoria, Ohio entitled duties and owner, I'm sorry, duties of owner relating to permissible grass height.
Move to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion by Mendoza, a second by Lake. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lake?
Yes.
Layman?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
That ordinance carries. It's ordinance number 2025-28.
An ordinance amending Section 1305.04 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Fostoria, Ohio entitled yard area maintenance relating to fees and permissible grass height.
Move to adopt. Second.
We have a motion by Lake, a second by Mendoza. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Layman?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
That carries. It becomes ordinance number 2025-29. And the last piece of old business is tabled, which has never had a reading, so it's, but it's now been moved to old business because it's been on the docket, so.
Do we have an understanding or a reading yet on the, can we waive the three-reading rule or no?
Yes, the three-reading rule may be waived with a unanimous majority of council members. So, if there's one person's dissent, we do not have enough to let that carry.
I would like to move to untable that item.
Second.
Okay, we do have a motion to untable this item by Layman, a second by Lake. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Cassidy?
No.
I'm sorry, what was that?
No.
Baker?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Layman?
Yes.
That will remain tabled.
Do we have a majority? Or did it have to be unanimous?
Does it have to be a simple majority? Law Director's not here. Right. I believe for the tabling, it does have to be a simple majority, so you are correct. I just got thrown off with the question about the three-reading rule, so. So, yes, that does come off the table with the four-to-one vote.
Okay.
Ours, untabled, is back on the agenda.
All right. And I would move to suspend the three-reading rule on three separate occasions, please.
Needs to be read first.
Oh, I apologize.
Okay. Would you like to read it, please?
Sure.
Second.
We're going to read it first.
Okay, sorry.
An ordinance to authorize, direct, and empower the Director of Public Service and Safety to solicit bids for the lease of a portion of real estate, namely the surface area of the water body no longer needed for public purposes, identified by Hancock County Permanent Parcel Numbers 510000910170 and 510000910180, commonly known as Reservoir 5, for the specified purposes of photovoltaic solar energy purposes and to enter into a lease of the said portion of real estate with the highest bidder only and declaring emergency to exist.
Move to suspend the three-reading rule on three separate occasions.
Second.
Now have a motion by Layman, a second by Lake to suspend the three-reading rule on three separate occasions. And this one does indeed need a full majority to carry this evening. So, clerk, would you call the roll?
Layman?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
The three-reading rule has been waived. Seeing no motion, this piece of legislation dies for lack of a motion to adopt. So, it will be removed from the agenda. That concludes old business will go into new business.
Sorry. An ordinance adopting and amending ordinance number 2024-105, permanent 2025 appropriations by appropriating from unappropriated funds in the General Fund, Drug Law Enforcement Fund, and the Iron Triangle Rail Park Fund, transferring appropriations in the opioid settlement fund, and transferring funds from the General Fund to the Iron Triangle Rail Park Fund and declaring an emergency to exist.
That is the first reading of that ordinance. Last piece of new business.
Okay. A resolution determining the disposition of interest earned by the City of Fostoria on various investments, specifically water and sewer accounts.
That is the first reading of that resolution. That concludes new business for this evening. We will go into the miscellaneous business, which is the portion in which we will meet each of the candidates. So, just to give you guys all a rundown of what we're going to do, when I am finished speaking, we will ask all of you to leave the room, with the exception of the first person on the list. That person will stay. They'll be able to make an opening statement. The council members will have an opportunity to ask questions of that person, to have a short dialogue. When that person is finished, they'll go out in the hallway with the other candidates. The next person will come into the room. We'll repeat that process till all people have had an opportunity to speak and have dialogue with council members. At that point, we'll have all of the candidates come back into the room. We will then request a executive session to discuss personnel matters. We'll go back into executive session, hopefully briefly. We'll come back out, and we will take a roll call vote. So, that'll be the portion for, for the, hopefully, the election of one of these people to the empty seat on council this evening. With that, with that happening, when we conclude that, we will be asking for a second executive session with no business to follow. So, we're doing it in two different executive sessions, because we have more personnel business to discuss. Again, it has to carry with a majority of council. If for some reason the council doesn't have a majority to go into executive session, we will be asking council members to do a roll call on, on the fly from their seats to elect the person from council, and we'll have to forego the second executive session. And that'll get us to the end of the meeting. I just wanted to be transparent with basically what's going to happen from now until the end of the meeting. So, at this time, with the following people, Alexander Grine, you may stay, because you're going to be first up. Damian Slay, Deborah Tyson, Elliot Schaefer, Ryan Smith, Susan Macias, and Michael Spencer. If you wouldn't mind, please leave the room. There's benches out here in the hallway, and the last one, please close the door behind you. I will be going in the order that you appear on the agenda. Grine, if you'd like to approach the podium here and... For council people and everybody else that's in here, I did do the research. They all are residents of the City of Fostoria. They were all electors and have participated in the previous election, which is the only requirement the charter requires of, of filling a position. So, every one of these are viable candidates for this position. Mr. Grine, I know you're on the spot, being first, but we just ask you to introduce yourself, make a statement. Hopefully, some of the council people have questions for you when you're finished, so.
Sure. Yes, my name's Alex Grine. Born and raised in Fostoria, graduated from Fostoria High School in 2002. Followed that by going to Ohio State University, where I achieved BSBA in transportation logistics, and then my MBA from Capital University. Stayed in Columbus for about 15 years, working in various leadership roles in manufacturing. Moved back to town about 10 years ago. Since then, I've worked, the Custom Glass Solutions was the plant manager when we brought the new facility here into Fostoria. And then currently, I work at Marathon Petroleum in Findlay. My specialties really, I have a lot of experience in leadership, again, primarily in operations roles. Since being at Marathon, a lot of work in data analytics. So, I think some of those things can be useful to the city. Very passionate about the City of Fostoria, and would like to do my part to help us grow in any way that we can. Since being back in town, I've volunteered and served a couple capacities on the board of the Gary Family YMCA for six years, including two as a chair. And then currently serve as a treasurer for the Redmond Club boost organization.
If you have questions you'd like to ask of Mr. Grine?
I do. What is your motivation beyond counsel?
Yeah, great question. So, again, I'm passionate about the city. I'd like to see it grow. I think it's really interesting listening to the concerns of the citizens here today. And I think that I bring some skills that would serve the city, especially financially. Been in charge of P&Ls and things like that in leadership positions in the past, so have an understanding with that, knowing that we're still in fiscal conservatorship, I think that's what you call it, but knowing that we need to, you know, make some smart decisions to help us grow out of that and be able to better serve the community.
Do you have any conflict resolution experience? Or can you give an example when you had to resolve a conflict?
Sure. So, probably the one, I mean, many in work and leadership positions. There's been plenty of things that have incurred amongst employees and things like that that have had to be resolved. Maybe something most similar to counsel would be when I served on the board at the YMCA as the president or the chair of that organization. There were multiple, or really one pretty severe, you know, concern brought up by an employee around sexual harassment, and so had to do the due diligence to understand. So, it was between two employees, one of which was in a leadership position. And so, I happened to go through the work and do the investigation of that, understand what are the facts on each side, use some third-party resources that were unbiased, and then come to what we believe would be the best conclusion to satisfy the concern.
Got another question for you. Where do you envision Fostoria being five years from now?
So, certainly out of the fiscal conservatorship, I'd like to see that. I don't know the details of what that all entails, but I would like to see that, or think that we're on the path to that. You know, I'm not active on social media, but I do kind of lurk and follow, so I see what some of the concerns are of the citizens. So, things with, you know, I'd like to address some of the major concerns I've seen, which is some of the water that has been brought out today, roadways, activities for youth to do, and any type of economic development that we can have. I think we have a strong workforce. I saw that when I brought the factory to town. And I'd like to see more options for people in town.
Who else? Thank you very much, if you wouldn't mind having Damian come in, please.
Sure. Thank you. Are we good to go? All right. Hi, I'm Damian Slay. I live on 329 North Kyneland Street. If you here might already know who I am. And of course, I'm here because I am running for the at-large council position. So kind of the elephant in the room here, was going to address my age. I know that there's probably some doubts about it, and I'm not gonna run some mental genetics here, it's a reasonable concern. And so I suppose I'd like to say with that is, in a position such as this, when you're, I won't say in charge, but involved in the affairs of an entire city, there's so many fields and areas of expertise here that it's really hard to kind of know it all on your own. And so all of us have to rely to some extent on the wisdom of the community, on their expertises, on their judgment, what they know, and their specific fields here. I know that there's some people who are specialized in their fields. There are farmers here, there are factory workers here, and of course, all those would be more knowledgeable in those fields than I would be, or maybe some of you would be if you're not especially involved in those fields. So my promise then, that if I ever do make this position, that I will always respect the expertise and the knowledge of the community first and foremost before my own, I suppose, intuitions here on that, and to respect common sense here, of course. Things come a little lacking sometimes nowadays, you know, common sense. But one thing that I would certainly like to look into here is to bring more jobs into Fostoria. There is a very large job industry here, but as we know, there's been a lot of closings lately. Kmart shut down about five years ago. The Autolite Plant shut down not that long ago, I think by about eight years, if I'm not mistaken. And then, of course, Atlas Crankshaft some years before that. And I think it would be very beneficial, not only to the community, but also to the city in terms of just revenue, to bring, to work with corporations to bring jobs back in our community, specifically blue collar manufacturing sort of jobs and distribution jobs would be very beneficial, not only for low and medium skilled workers here in Fostoria, but also for the city, because between property taxes, income taxes, brings revenue into the city and to the general fund that we could use to drastically improve the city even as, as it stands. And so beyond that, sort of reminded sometimes of a 2012 study by the Brookings Institute, which notes that the presence and the decline of blue collar and skilled labor jobs have a direct correlation with issues such as divorce, primary, and drugs. And it really sounds sort of outlandish to say that, but it really does, and when you consider the stability that many of these jobs bring and the decline in terms of the rise of drug epidemic, the rise of divorce rates, things of that matter, since the 1980s, 1990s and the Rust Belt, you know, the movement of jobs out of the state of Ohio. So that would be my main, I suppose, focus as council member. But of course, the focus should always be on responding to the concerns of the community and to bettering the City of Fostoria as it stands. I have, some of you might know I've been in the FFA for the last several years, and what it, what it has taught me, despite my age, is leadership and the application of leadership and the qualities that it brings and the importance of service to the wider community. And so I would, of course, bring that every day with me, as long as I worked here, to better the City of Fostoria and to bring more opportunities to its residents, and that'd be it for me. Thank you.
Go on. Thank you. You get an opportunity to answer questions if any council member has a question.
All right.
I have a question. What are the two biggest issues that you feel to me need to be addressed in Fostoria at this time?
At this time, I would say from personal experience that the drug epidemic is a very big issue, not just in Fostoria, but in Ohio as a whole. And of course, I think it doesn't need said that the landfill has been a very divisive issue in the city. I do believe that there is a compromise. Of course, we do need a landfill, a trash dump for a city as large as Fostoria, but there are more, I believe a compromise that can be made between the state and the residents of the city that would make all parties happy in that, in that method. And of course, there's people who know more about it than I do that would definitely help with that and help with the council with that.
What, if anything, do you hope to gain personally from this position?
Hope to gain personally? I would say definitely the experience and the value in serving my community here. It should definitely be the biggest responsibility I've had so far, and so that would be certainly a learning experience in any way, in many ways as well. So definitely, definitely that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you very much, if you don't mind, have Deborah Tyson come in, please.
Do I get to speak?
You get to give us your opening statement, and then we'll see if council members have questions for you.
Okay. Deb Tyson, I was born in Ohio. I was raised in this Fostoria area. I graduated from Lakota because my dad did not want to live in the city, but my grandmother did. So I visited all the shops. I actually worked in a shop when I was old enough to work downtown. It's no longer a dress shop anymore. And I came back here after raising my family because I believe in Fostoria and I want to see it back the way it was, where it was booming, where everybody, doesn't matter what generation you are, there's something for us. That's it. Questions?
What?
Questions?
Deb, what, if anything, do you hope to gain personally from this experience or this position?
Just help Fostoria progress because one of the things I noticed back early on, I meant for a year, I've been here faithfully almost, other than when I had to go to Arcadia to help out. And I would like to see that we don't have these vacancies where we can't make a decision. And I think everybody knows that you can count on me to be here.
What are the two biggest issues that you feel need to be addressed in Fostoria right now?
I think, two top, we need to do something about our parks, and we need to do something about our streets.
And then I've got another question. Would you tell us briefly what you know about Fostoria's financial status right now and Fostoria's financial recovery?
Well, I know that you were in financial emergency and you're got a plan and you're working it out, but you guys have got it down to basically it's the water sewer that's kicking everything off the scales. And I think that some, some of it is how we are perceived by the public as far as our taxes and stuff, because I happen to know that everybody here that I see does their due diligence when it comes to finance, so. But I don't think the public realizes that.
Thank you, Deb. If you could, when you go back out, can you have Elliot Schaefer come in, please?
Hello, Council President, distinguished council members, Mayor, City Service Director. My name is Elliot Schaefer, and today I'm here to express my sincere interest in the open council-at-large position. As a fourth-generation lifelong resident of Fostoria, I care a deeply rooted connection to our city and strong commitment to its continued growth. My background spans a wide range of industries, including media production, community engagement, manufacturing, and infrastructure management. The diverse experience has shaped my understanding of both challenges and opportunities our city faces. Throughout my career, I've developed a unique perspective of how Fostoria's proud heritage, particularly in transportation, glassmaking, and local manufacturing, can be leveraged as a powerful foundation for our future development. I believe that by honoring our past and embracing innovative strategies, we can build a stronger, more connected Fostoria for generations to come. I'm committed to working with our city's existing infrastructure, to continue good legislation already in place, and while also advocating for more representation and transparency for all residents. My goal is to be a voice for the people and help steer our city in a direction that balances business growth with the citizens' well-being. My background includes recruitment, video and media production, the direct work in corporate and industrial operations, from working as a supplier quality technician at Whirlpool to managing complex logistics as a pipeline operator for Marathon, to creating content that connects people to local stories. My path has always centered around helping systems and people work better together. As a candidate for mayor in 2023, I earned the support of around 600 residents. That experience strengthened my beliefs in open communication and responsive leadership. I am also a substitute teacher for Fostoria City Schools and have been a participant in Hancock Leadership, both of which have further rooted me into my community. So as I continue forward, I do have some more statements here. My vision for Fostoria is a citizen first. I look for parks and pathways and expanding recreational opportunities for families and improving green spaces throughout the city, local businesses and train tourism, and city beautification and communication. And also the main thing, our environmental responsibility. Actively opposing landfill expansion and advocating for sustainability, the community-oriented solutions, and reducing environmental impact. I love Fostoria deeply and believe in its potential. With dedication, collaboration, and responsible decision-making, we can ensure that the city thrives for generations to come. Thank you. Any questions?
I have one.
Go for it.
Tell us briefly what you know about Fostoria's financial condition.
Fostoria's financial condition.
Tell us also what you know about the Fostoria Recovery Plan that we're participating in.
I know that we're in a financial emergency, that we're currently working with an auditor to work through our financial situation. We have a new finance director that's working through all out of our situation, and he's trying to do his best to inform the citizens as to what we need to know when it comes to that financial situation.
How do you navigate working closely with someone who has an opposing view than you?
We all have opposing views, and I think it's important to listen. I think that's the first kind of position that you should take, and then try to look at, look at it from that person's point of view and have empathy. So if you can do that, then I think you can come to a common ground and try to find a win-win for both people.
And then what, if anything, do you hope to gain personally from this position?
I don't think to gain anything personally. I just want to help the citizens of Fostoria. Thank you.
Got another question for you.
Go. Yes, sir.
What are the two biggest issues in Fostoria that you feel to need to be addressed? The two biggest?
I think people can get confused with misinformation. I think clear communication and I guess just be forward and try and proactive about trying to provide as much information as you can before something happens. I think that active communication, and I know that there's a, that a lot of really good positive changes that have happened so far, and I kudos to seeing that, but I'd like to see people help more in trying to provide that information. And if we can all work together to, to get that out to people more readily and faster, I think we can work, work on something positive.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. If you could, send Ryan Smith in.
Ryan Smith? Okay, thank you.
Have I introduced myself, or?
Yeah, if you want to introduce yourself, tell you, tell us about yourself, what you hope to do, and then they may have some questions for you when you're finished with your presentation.
All right. My name is Ryan Smith, 1001 North Union Street, Ward One. I am a native Fostorian. I'm from, graduated class of 98. After I graduated, I joined the military and the Air Force as a munitions specialist, traveled the world, got my degree while I was there. I've done a lot of councils and boards and worked in contracting with the government, so I do have some experience that transfers over. Retired in 2014, went to the University of Maryland for horticulture, came back here four years ago, married my junior high sweetheart, and I'm here today. Do you have any questions for me?
What, if anything, do you hope to gain personally from this position?
Personally? Well, I'd like to personally gain the mobility to control over the water. I'd like my water to taste a little bit better. I'd like to get into politics again. I haven't done anything like this in a while, and it's just something I want to get accomplished.
Thank you.
Grine, I have one question for you. What I have found as a council member is that we work best when we rely upon the, a strong attribute in our peers. So I will rely upon another council member that may be strong in an area in which I am weak. How would, what would you identify as an area that you would be strong in, that you might be supportive of another council member?
I'd say one of my strongest areas is reading regulations and following them. In the military, I had to do a lot of writing, a lot of discipline, a lot of reading the regulations. You're either right with the regulations or you're not. I've actually spent a lot of time reading all the codified ordinances here in town. I've already found some that either no longer apply or they contradict our current rules that we have in place that need to be worked on, and I'm also willing to help read through any of those at any time. I'm pretty boring like that.
Thank you.
I'd like for you to tell us where you envision Fostoria being in five years.
Fostoria in five years? Well, I would like to see, when I grew up here, we had six elementary schools, now we're down to one, and as combined with the middle school, I would like to see the growth of Fostoria increase so we can get another school up and going, we get more businesses here. I think fixing the water would be one of the best things the city can do to grow, because if you ever gone to McDonald's and got a pop, it tastes like reservoir water, it tastes like moldy bleach. The food at Bob Evans, you get the gravy, they made it with the water and the water didn't taste that day, you don't eat that more. So if I want to go somewhere to eat, I go to Findlay, or I go somewhere else, or I stay home and use my own stuff. I think if we do the little problems first, we can help the community grow, bring more businesses in and prosper.
Another question for you. What are the two biggest, specifically what are the two biggest issues you feel need to be addressed here? And I, I know you talked about water and some of this, but if you were to pick the two top in your mind that you want fixed, what would they be?
Well, the two biggest ones I hear on, for the population of the community, is the water and it is the landfill. Those are probably the two biggest problems the town has right now. Other than that, I don't hear much else of anything that needs fixed immediately, other than bringing businesses into town and growing the population.
Other questions? Thank you, Mr. Smith. I appreciate your time this evening. If you could, when you go out, send in Susan Macias, please.
Absolutely. Thank you for your time, and I do have one thing for the council. I apologize, your flags are backwards. The American flag goes on the left.
Need to be turned?
No, it needs to go. No, it needs to go. We'll do it later. We're not going to move over. We'll fix it before I leave tonight, though.
Am I next?
Yes. You can stay right there, and you can speak into the microphone if you don't mind, and just...
I have a good enough voice.
That's fine. You do. Just tell us about yourself, why you're interested in the position, and then they'll probably have some questions for you.
Recognize some familiar faces. My name is Susan Macias. I did grow up here. And I decided after years with the military and university and Department of Defense to come back home. And I've been really excited about coming back to Austria. Not only to see some friends, but friends that have also returned at the same time. I will concede that having just been back since Labor Day weekend of this past year, there was a lot of things that I was concerned about, and I've heard a great deal of that information here by some of our citizens. My vision for the whole town, what I'd like to contribute is just open communication because a lot of times people don't understand what's going on, whether it be specifics, whether it be data controlled, whether it be where's the money going, what is the reason that we are doing this? Why are we conceding, you know, to this company that has this big dump? Because that's all I heard my father talk about. Every weekend I'd come home, and I'm telling you, I did the two-hour commute every weekend to have to come home. And if I went out to the cafe table to get something to drink, I kind of would just like do a little pass. So I do have a lot of concerns because when I retire here, obviously, just like you, when you come home from work, you've lived here, you want to come home to clean water, nice community, where citizens are involved. And just to kind of give you an idea, I was very active even when I was young. I remember bugging the mayor when I first grew up here to have a softball team. And look how big that got. You have like big softball tournaments out here. Had to bug my principal at St. Willan High School to get a basketball team. And we finally got around to doing that. So what we want to do, what my vision for the town is, not only the communication, but getting people more involved, not just us as adults, but the younger children. But I will have to concede that once again, I am, like I said, just recently returned and don't know a great deal, but I tell you what, I would bury my head and contact a lot of my friends that I have here, or non-friends, wherever the information might go. I'm a face-to-face person. Being in the military, I'm still very much an idealist, but being in the military, I'm not a Pollyanna either. So there's going to be a lot of hard decisions that have to be made, but at the same time, let's talk about it and let's get everything else on the table. So, did everybody know that I'm a veteran? That's, I aim to serve. I had 13 years with the army. I got tired of sleeping outside, so I switched to the Air Force. And then I retired in 2012 and then ended up working for the Department of Defense. I kind of got my dream job, believe it or not, after some obstacles, self-imposed as well as other extra obstacles. I got my dream job. I actually ended up with a master's degree in Russian history, got to study in Russia and Ukraine. And when I retired from the military, I was hired on at National Air and Space Intelligence Center for the Air Force, where I just retired this past January. So, in any capacity, whether I get a position here, I certainly would like to help any council members that will take my help. So, thank you very much for the time. Any questions?
I have questions.
Yes, sir.
But this is not a question to start out, it's a thank you for your service.
My pleasure. It's been my pleasure, really. Thank you. It's all about opportunities. I don't think, I mean, I've been everywhere between Guam, St. Petersburg, Russia, not yet the China area yet, but had it not been for the military, don't know if I would have had that experience.
You might have had a chance to visit New Rigo, Arcadia, or Weston.
I have. And that's why I've come home, because I remember the Austria when I grew up. I remember walking down the street, going to the drugstore, getting a soda. I remember Kresge, it was at Kresge's, right?
Yeah.
Soda fountains, I miss those soda fountains. I mean, you know, I'd like, I'll tell you what, my first experience back here at home was I sold my house at Bowling Green Labor Day weekend. I went to bed Saturday night before I went home. I could hear Catholic church bells ringing at nine o'clock. Then later on, I heard the railroad tracks. And then I still heard some music coming from downtown. I'm like, I made the right choice. I'm home. I'm home, so whatever I can do to help, you know, I hope I can.
I returned here about 10 years ago, and I had the same feeling waking up the first day back, you know? So, where do you envision Austria being in five years?
I'd like to see our water clean. Because I think somebody here in here in the meeting mentioned it. Water's got to be scarce. If you look at forecast down the road, we need to have clean water for our little corner of the, you know, earth, the world. I'm sorry. But I would like to see us be able to make more independent decisions about our community as well as the surrounding communities. And hopefully, we can work in better cooperation so we don't have to worry about them attacking maybe just the Austria water, but the surrounding areas. And hopefully, we can have, once again, better communication and work in strength together. So I'd like to see Austria be able to be financially stable, be able to have nice streets, you know, be able to have, you know, good workers that take care of the streets, not only during the summertime, but during the wintertime, not having to, you know, buy a new vehicle, and then you have to use alternate streets because they're just too bumpy, and a well-paid and well-educated, you know, force, which includes fire department, police, any of the other city employees.
If you were appointed, what will be your number one priority all the time as a councilperson?
Communication between the citizens and the council. I mean, like I said earlier, I'm a face-to-face person. I might date myself, but even when email came out, when I worked at Bowling Green State University, I was an admissions counselor there. I would walk across campus because sometimes when you write an email, those can be misinterpreted. If somebody sees your face and I'm asking you for a question, it doesn't feel like I'm demanding something from you. You know, I just like, hey, see the smile on my face? I come in peace, let's see if we can't work together to get something done.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. If you could, send in Michael Spencer.
Okay.
Thank you. He was here before the public.
Look, I did.
Good evening. I'm Michael Spencer from Austria all my life. And yeah, I've kind of gone through this program before. I've ran for like four or five times. And last time, Tom got a coin flip on me in a fourth board, but it's all right. I want to be on council so that I can help the citizens here in Austria. We've got people that are here. I remember when it was busy. I know that we don't have the businesses here to keep the people here. We need a better population. We need more stores. But we need the factories, too. We also need to get the kids something to do. And I'm also thinking, the adults need something to do, too. So if we can get something that's nice and productive, we can go that way. I'm here to listen to all the citizens, like I usually do anyway. And thank you for your time.
Questions?
I got some questions for you. Don't roll your eyes, I'll be...
I'm just waiting, I'm just waiting, okay.
What are the two, in your mind, the two biggest issues that you feel we need to address in this community?
Shopping? No, no, it's got to be more, too. Because we need someplace to shop. I'm not going to Dollar General and shop. Can't, no, suits don't make it there. Something for the younger people to do. We don't have a pool unless they go to the Y. We need something summer and winter. And then we got the adults that need something else to do besides getting in trouble. And then we know what happens to them when they do that. And we need to do something about the roads and sidewalks. Okay, all right.
If you're appointed to council, what will be your number one constant priority?
Constant priority would be talking to the citizens of Austria, finding out where they're at, what they need, then bring it back to council. I want to know, oh wait. Even if they don't vote, the kids in school, they got to have a say, too. So, I want to hear from everybody what's on their mind, how they think they can get Austria better, and work on that.
Other questions? Thank you, Mr. Spencer. If you could, you can come in and bring everybody else back in as well. Now that we're all back in here, I wanted to thank everybody that spoke this evening that put in an interest. It is nice to see this many people, this many great and qualified candidates. I'm happy as the president of council that we get to make a decision a little bit, and I don't think we can make a bad decision. The unfortunate thing is we only have one spot to fill. So, that's what's going to happen. We're going to ask for an executive session if you guys are so inclined to do so.
I've moved into executive session for the purpose of personnel matters.
Yes.
To consider appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official.
Awesome. We have motion by Lehman, second by Cassidy. Clerk, would you call the rule?
Lehman?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
We will go into executive session. There will be business to follow. It is 7:22.
Do we have a motion to come back from executive session?
Second.
We have a motion by Cassidy and a second by Baker to come out of executive session. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lehman?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
We are officially out of executive session at 7:39. So back into session. We are going to ask each council member to cast a affirmative vote for the person they would like to see appointed to city council. As president, I really hope that there's a majority after the, after the round of voting, because I don't want to break a tie. We have some excellent candidates. I wish we had, I don't wish we had seven open spots, but I wish we could have all of you serve in this one position. So we'll do that. Just of, just to be transparent, if there's a simple majority out of five, that'd be three. That would constitute the person being appointed. If there's a two-two-and-one deadlock, we would drop the one as kind of like a primary and have a revote with those two candidates, hopefully creating a simple majority. And if, just in full transparency, if we wind up with five single votes, worst-case scenario for me, I have to sit up here and decide, or I could pick one of the other two people that didn't get a vote yet, so, and then throw it back at the council. So, so we're going to go through. We're going to ask the clerk to read each council member's name. They'll give a name. The majority would then become the councilperson. So go ahead and call the roll.
Councilperson Lehman?
Grine.
Councilperson Cassidy?
Grine.
Councilperson Baker?
Grine.
Councilperson Mendoza?
Messias.
Messias?
Yes.
Councilperson Lake?
Grine.
Congratulations, Mr. Grine. You've been appointed to the council position. The other people that didn't get it this evening, please don't get discouraged. I was very impressed with each and every single one of you. There are elections that will be coming up and so on. Some of you are on ballots already. Some of you, hopefully, will see you in future ballots. Don't be strangers to the room and so on. Mr. Grine, we will see you at the next council meeting. We will swear you in before the next council meeting. We'll start the meeting, we'll swear you in, then we'll sit you down and basically throw you to the wolves and make you learn everything on the fly. So, and that'll be on April 15th. We are requesting a second executive session this evening. If the members are so inclined, there will not be business to follow. It is also going to be for personnel reasons. We have some employees' evaluations that we have to do. So, so there will be no business to follow.
I'd like to make a motion to move into executive session for personnel matters to consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion by Lehman, a second by Mendoza for an executive session for personnel matters. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lehman?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
All right, we are in executive session at 7:43. So back into session. We are going to ask each council member to cast a affirmative vote for the person they would like to see appointed to city council. As president, I really hope that there's a majority after the, after the round of voting, because I don't want to break a tie. We have some excellent candidates. I wish we had, I don't wish we had seven open spots, but I wish we could have all of you serve in this one position. So we'll do that. Just of, just to be transparent, if there's a simple majority out of five, that'd be three. That would constitute the person being appointed. If there's a two-two-and-one deadlock, we would drop the one as kind of like a primary and have a revote with those two candidates, hopefully creating a simple majority. And if, just in full transparency, if we wind up with five single votes, worst-case scenario for me, I have to sit up here and decide, or I could pick one of the other two people that didn't get a vote yet, so, and then throw it back at the council. So, so we're going to go through. We're going to ask the clerk to read each council member's name. They'll give a name. The majority would then become the councilperson. So go ahead and call the roll.
Councilperson Lehman?
Grine.
Councilperson Cassidy?
Grine.
Councilperson Baker?
Grine.
Councilperson Mendoza?
Messias.
Messias?
Yes.
Councilperson Lake?
Grine.
Congratulations, Mr. Grine. You've been appointed to the council position. The other people that didn't get it this evening, please don't get discouraged. I was very impressed with each and every single one of you. There are elections that will be coming up and so on. Some of you are on ballots already. Some of you, hopefully, will see you in future ballots. Don't be strangers to the room and so on. Mr. Grine, we will see you at the next council meeting. We will swear you in before the next council meeting. We'll start the meeting, we'll swear you in, then we'll sit you down and basically throw you to the wolves and make you learn everything on the fly. So, and that'll be on April 15th. We are requesting a second executive session this evening. If the members are so inclined, there will not be business to follow. It is also going to be for personnel reasons. We have some employees' evaluations that we have to do. So, so there will be no business to follow.
I'd like to make a motion to move into executive session for personnel matters to consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion by Lehman, a second by Mendoza for an executive session for personnel matters. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lehman? Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
All right, we are in executive session at 7:43. So back into session. We are going to ask each council member to cast a affirmative vote for the person they would like to see appointed to city council. As president, I really hope that there's a majority after the, after the round of voting, because I don't want to break a tie. We have some excellent candidates. I wish we had, I don't wish we had seven open spots, but I wish we could have all of you serve in this one position. So we'll do that. Just of, just to be transparent, if there's a simple majority out of five, that'd be three. That would constitute the person being appointed. If there's a two-two-and-one deadlock, we would drop the one as kind of like a primary and have a revote with those two candidates, hopefully creating a simple majority. And if, just in full transparency, if we wind up with five single votes, worst-case scenario for me, I have to sit up here and decide, or I could pick one of the other two people that didn't get a vote yet, so, and then throw it back at the council. So, so we're going to go through. We're going to ask the clerk to read each council member's name. They'll give a name. The majority would then become the councilperson. So go ahead and call the roll.
Councilperson Lehman?
Grine.
Councilperson Cassidy?
Grine.
Councilperson Baker?
Grine.
Councilperson Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
All right, we are in executive session at 7:43. So back into session. We are going to ask each council member to cast a affirmative vote for the person they would like to see appointed to city council. As president, I really hope that there's a majority after the, after the round of voting, because I don't want to break a tie. We have some excellent candidates. I wish we had, I don't wish we had seven open spots, but I wish we could have all of you serve in this one position. So we'll do that. Just of, just to be transparent, if there's a simple majority out of five, that'd be three. That would constitute the person being appointed. If there's a two-two-and-one deadlock, we would drop the one as kind of like a primary and have a revote with those two candidates, hopefully creating a simple majority. And if, just in full transparency, if we wind up with five single votes, worst-case scenario for me, I have to sit up here and decide, or I could pick one of the other two people that didn't get a vote yet, so, and then throw it back at the council. So, so we're going to go through. We're going to ask the clerk to read each council member's name. They'll give a name. The majority would then become the councilperson. So go ahead and call the roll.
Councilperson Lehman?
Grine.
Councilperson Cassidy?
Grine.
Councilperson Baker?
Grine.
Councilperson Mendoza?
Messias.
Messias?
Yes.
Councilperson Lake?
Grine.
Congratulations, Mr. Grine. You've been appointed to the council position. The other people that didn't get it this evening, please don't get discouraged. I was very impressed with each and every single one of you. There are elections that will be coming up and so on. Some of you are on ballots already. Some of you, hopefully, will see you in future ballots. Don't be strangers to the room and so on. Mr. Grine, we will see you at the next council meeting. We will swear you in before the next council meeting. We'll start the meeting, we'll swear you in, then we'll sit you down and basically throw you to the wolves and make you learn everything on the fly. So, and that'll be on April 15th. We are requesting a second executive session this evening. If the members are so inclined, there will not be business to follow. It is also going to be for personnel reasons. We have some employees' evaluations that we have to do. So, so there will be no business to follow.
I'd like to make a motion to move into executive session for personnel matters to consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion by Lehman, a second by Mendoza for an executive session for personnel matters. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lehman? Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
All right, we are in executive session at 7:43.
We had, I don't wish we had seven open spots, but I wish we could have all of you serve in this one position. So we'll do that. Just to be transparent, if there's a simple majority out of five, that'd be three. That would constitute the person being appointed. If there's a two-two-and-one deadlock, we would drop the one as kind of like a primary and have a revote with those two candidates, hopefully creating a simple majority. And if, just in full transparency, if we wind up with five single votes, worst-case scenario for me, I have to sit up here and decide, or I could pick one of the other two people that didn't get a vote yet. So, and then throw it back at the council. So, so we're going to go through, we're going to ask the clerk to read each council member's name. They'll give a name. The majority would then become the councilperson. So go ahead and call the roll.
Councilperson Lehman?
Grine.
Councilperson Cassidy?
Grine.
Councilperson Baker?
Grine.
Councilperson Mendoza?
Messias?
Messias?
Yes.
Councilperson Lake?
Grine.
Congratulations, Mr. Grine. You've been appointed to the council position. The other people that didn't get it this evening, please don't get discouraged. I was very impressed with each and every single one of you. There are elections that will be coming up and so on. Some of you are on ballots already. Some of you hopefully will see you in future ballots. Don't be strangers to the room and so on. Mr. Grine, we will see you at the next council meeting. We will swear you in before the next council meeting. We'll start the meeting, we'll swear you in, then we'll sit you down and basically throw you to the wolves and make you learn everything on the fly. So, and that'll be on April 15th. We are requesting a second executive session this evening. If the members are so inclined, there will not be business to follow. It is also going to be for personnel reasons. We have some employees' evaluations that we have to do. So, so there will be no business to follow. So.
I'd like to make a motion to move into executive session for personnel matters to consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official.
Second.
We have a motion by Lehman, a second by Mendoza for an executive session for personnel matters. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lehman?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
All right, we are in executive session at 7:43.
...
We got motion by Lake, second by Cassidy. Clerk would you call the roll please?
Laman?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
All right, we're out of executive session at eight thirty-four. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move in here.
Cassidy first, Lake second, to adjourn. Clerk would you call the roll please?
Laman?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yep.
Baker?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake? Have a good evening!
Aggredored eight thirty-four.